All the meeting to order. Stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Pierce.
Present.
Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Peterson.
Here.
Trustee Bluthart.
Here.
Trustee Berman.
Here.
Trustee Dominia.
Here.
Mayor Gardner.
Here.
Trustees wishing to attend remotely.
That would be me.
There would only be an objection in a second.
Well, under the emergency declaration, anybody can.
We're so good. There was some confusion on that yesterday.
That was my understanding. Is that not correct?
Yes, but the declaration, there was some confusion about that yesterday. There was different opinions by differing law firms. And regardless, there was, we are okay to, for, this is a negative covenant in so much that the only time this comes into effect is if there's a motion in a second to object to a trustee wishing to attend remotely. No motion has been made, and of course, then no second has been made. So with respect, the issue is moot unless someone makes an objection, and then it's.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Sorry about any confusion.
Thank you. The first item, this is a public hearing on the intent to issue general obligation bond series 2021. I will turn this over to, I believe it's Daryl Davidson, who is joining us via Zoom.
Good evening, trustees. Before you, it is a resolution for later in your meeting with respect to what's called a Bond Information Notice Act hearing. This is required of Illinois municipalities such as the village when they contemplate coming forward with a bond issue that will tax taxpayers within the municipality. First, the first item, businesses to hold a hearing formally with respect to this. And the second part, to see if any members of the public or in the audience may, may have any points or considerations that they would like to share with you with respect to the bond issue. And then after those comments are concluded, the hearing should be closed. And later on in your agenda is the actual adoption of a resolution, which I have provided to the village, which documents the procedural matters leading up to this hearing, which includes a newspaper publication and posting of various notices. So I'd like to ask you if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Trustee Pierce.
Yes, my question is, what is the purpose of this and how much money are we saving by doing this?
I do not have the financial details yet with respect to that. This is not, this is merely a procedural step that's required. The next consideration for the board will be later in August where a bond, a parameter is bond or ordinance will be presented to the board according to the financing schedule. And at that point, the financial details of savings and the other financial details of the bond issue will be presented to you.
Mr. Kind.
Baird Financial has provided us some estimates. So the purpose of this refunding would be to lower the interest rate and to save overall costs on its principal and interest, mainly the interest with a lower rate. And our estimates are about $400,000 over the course of the rest of the life of this. We're not extending the life. It's going to be the same term. Just going to lower that rate and try to get some savings.
Anything else, trustee Pierce?
No, your honor.
Trustee Mason?
No questions.
Trustee Peterson?
No questions, your honor.
Trustee Bluthart?
No questions.
Trustee Berman?
No questions.
Trustee Dominia?
No question.
I entertain a motion to close the public hearing. If there are any other questions.
I would just ask, and Daryl, correct me if I'm wrong, but is there anyone who wants to make comments on this either?
That's correct. If there is anyone in the audience or have otherwise communicated with the village, this would be the time to bring that up.
Anyone on Zoom that has raised their hand? Okay. All right, I think we can entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
All right, a motion by trustee Peterson, second by trustee Bluthart. Trustee Pierce.
Hi.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Peterson?
Yes.
Trustee Bluthart?
Yes.
Trustee Berman?
Yes.
Trustee Dominia? Six voting yes, zero voting no. Motion carries. The public hearing is closed. Next, we'll move to the committee of the whole meeting. Roll call, please.
Trustee here.
Present.
Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Peterson.
Here.
Trustee Bluthart.
Here.
Trustee Berman.
Here.
Trustee Dominia.
Here.
Mayor Gardner.
Present. Any objection to trustees attending remotely? If not, we'll move on to the approval of the July 14th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes as presented.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by trustee Dominia, second by trustee Bluthart. Do you think, any discussion? Roll, please.
Pierce.
Hi.
Mason.
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Bluthart?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes.
Six yes, zero no. Motion carries. The approval of the minutes is approved. On to citizens wishing to address the board. Madam Clerk will read instructions for those joining on Zoom.
You're joining from a telephone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. On an Android or iOS device, tap more than raise hand, and on a computer, click raise hand in the Zoom controls.
Okay, I'll give it a moment. Is trustee Dominia, I don't believe anyone signed up. Okay. No hands? Okay. If, if anybody does, we can also have them join during the board, regular board meeting. So first item on the regular business agenda is discussion regarding agreement for shared parking lot southwest of Depot Street and Cunningham Drive with the United Methodist Church of Antioch Administrator Kind.
And Don Skidmore from representing the church is here with us tonight. The village struck an agreement with the Methodist Church for use of parking lot. The western portion of the parking lot serves as a, basically the parking lot for the police department. So both civilian vehicles, employee vehicles in our fleet are basically utilizing that lot. And it was a 20-year agreement. It is, I believe it's expiring in January, this upcoming January. The village, in exchange for use of the parking lot, the village took all maintenance responsibilities for the parking lot. So ceiling, striping, plowing, at one point, we did pay for the replacement of the parking lot, a resurfacing. A few years back, we bought, there was an old blue home next to the police station with the idea that we could use that for a parking lot, which, you know, when we constructed my plan, I did budget some money to design it in this current budget, thinking construction next year. And, you know, with that, we would not need to have, we have a sufficient parking lot for the police department. We would not need to use or enter into another agreement for the Methodist Church. So I think at this point, we won't have it constructed by the termination of this agreement, of expiration. So we, I would propose we amend this to a year-to-year thing. You know, we probably need it maybe till January of '23 or whenever we get that parking lot built. Do you have anything you want to add, Don? Right.
I'm sorry, I missed what Don was saying.
Oh, yeah. Mr. Skidmore stated that he would rather see the agreement go mid-year than terminate, you know, December 31st or middle of the winter. Trustee Pierce, do you have any questions or comments?
No comments at this time.
Trustee Mason?
Yeah, I, I don't, we, we have to figure out a way to secure our police vehicles and our assets. Most departments put fences up. Our, our assets are vulnerable. So, I mean, we got to put a plan in. Anybody can go there and mess with any officer's vehicle, our police vehicles. I mean, Antioch's getting to be a different place to live. I mean, that should be top priority. If we don't, if we don't secure a parking lot for our police vehicles and put authorized personnel only, shame, shame on this board.
Trustee Peterson?
I don't have any comments, your honor.
Trustee Bluthart?
No comment.
Trustee Berman?
No comments.
Trustee Dominia?
No comment.
Hey, anything else, trustee on this side? Okay, so I'd, I guess, pull the board to move this and authorize Mr. Kind to put this on the next agenda with a revised agreement.
Yeah, an amendment to this agreement with stipulating a date to expire in summer of, yeah, seven, one of '23, something like that.
Any objection from the board?
All right.
Thank you. Next item on the committee, the whole agenda is discussion regarding an ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter One of Municipal Code of Antioch regarding general traffic regulations. I'll ask Police Chief Gachau to present.
Glory, we're able to amend the agenda. Are we just dealing with the one item tonight?
The board did not get the ordinance related to, you can still.
Okay. Very good.
Absolutely, you can discuss these items. We cannot take a final action, but this is also committee of the whole, where we generally don't take it.
Okay, thank you. So there's a couple of, the first, first ordinance I'd like to talk to you about, so a few months back, there were some concerns raised by members of the board as the village strives to grow the downtown. There was a recognition that we may have some problems with noise and, and kind of quality of life, life issues in the downtown. We kind of turned to the IVC first to see if there were going to be ways that we can address some of those issues. And the requirements of the IVC itself didn't give us a very valuable tool. So I'm working with the attorney we drafted an ordinance would be called Display of Power Restrictions. So the intent to that is plug the hole where the IVC stops and says that you're not allowed to modify an exhaust of a vehicle beyond stock. This fills the place by amending it where it's going to address the motorcycles unnecessarily revving their engines, some of the diesel trucks that we have downtown that pull in front of the restaurants and blow black smoke, wheel tires, take off at high rates of speed, that sort of thing. So it kind of helped us address some of the quality of life downtown area. We'll extend, this one will also extend into our residential areas as well, if we have a problem.
Thank you. Discussion, trustee Pierce?
No, I was glad to hear that last statement about extending it to the residential areas because it seems more and more we're getting it at all hours in, at least near where I live, and I'm sure it's everywhere else with the motorcycles and the loud exhaust. And you can especially hear them on North Avenue when they're trying to display how fast they can go on North Avenue. So I'm all in favor of this as long as we're extending it everywhere in the village.
Trustee Mason?
I would like to add on to this, you know, noise is, is a good thing, but we got life safety issues. And maybe we sent the letter to the state a while back with the previous mayor, nothing, nothing turned up about it. Well, we've got 35 mile an hour, then we got 40 mile an hour speeding up the stoplights. You know, we've got a, a business district that goes out to Walmart, 45 miles an hour. I'm probably the only one on here that pronounced people they know on the side of a road for people excessive speeding. You know, we got roads that are just too damn fast. And we write letters to the state and they ignore us. We get, we get a whole subdivision at 59, 45 miles an hour. They're, they're going down that hill 65 miles an hour. We got to look at the speed limits in our town. You know, you want people to shop in our town, they don't even have time to look in our town when they're doing 60 miles an hour to our town. You know, how many, you know, you know, the only, the only thing that stops people in 59 is an officer sitting there. And they pull over a lot of people, thank you. They pull over a lot of people, sit at their stoplight. Backers probably doesn't like it because they're sitting there, but, but they're, they're a lifesaver there. But, I mean, our roads are just too fast. And, and they go from Emmens down and they go from Walmart, people are doing in the morning. I bet you people are doing 60 miles an hour going, going past Walmart. It's just too fast. Until you see that last breath someone takes on the side of the road, it's just too fast. And we wrote a letter to the state, they ignored it. We should get, we should get the representatives, Representative Weber up here for, for 59. We should talk to other representatives to get the speeds lowered. Could be your family member. It's just too fast. And it's going to inconvenience some people and they may, they may say, oh, I don't want to do 35 miles an hour. Well, it might save your life. So I'd like to add on to this. And we're going to talk about fireworks. Well, that's good and dandy. I might pull a handout, but speed kills. And I've been a part of it. I've pronounced too many people.
Trustee Peterson?
I agree with trustee Mason. I think that we can do something about the speed limits in town and slow people down. We want a lot of foot traffic downtown and it would be, it would be great if, if the state would back us up with that. It would be great.
Trustee Bluthart?
Um, no, nothing specific, just that I'll, agree with both. I mean, there are areas, it's, it's, speed varies so much that it's kind of hard to figure out where you're supposed to go. But definitely needs to be looked into.
Trustee Berman?
I agree with trustee Mason and trustee Pierce about the safety aspect. And then trustee Pierce with extending it to residential areas. Um, I'm sure if this kind of, if this fits in, I guess it does with what trustee Bluthart was saying about the varying, varying speeds. I, I have heard from some residents that it does get confusing down Main Street. There's a stretch where it jumps from 20 to, I believe, 30, and then it jumps back down 20 and it, it goes back forth. But even though that's not high speed, it's, it's still confusing. So I think that's something else that needs to be addressed as well. Um, that's all I have.
Trustee Dominia?
First of all, I want to thank you for taking care of this so quickly when I raised it. You know, I agree on the speeding is a problem. I come out of landmark points on 59 and experience what trustee Mason referred to. He part of the problem though, and this is not a criticism of the police force by any stretch of the imagination. It's an issue of enforcement. You know, if you're going 35 miles an hour down 59 after it drops down after that hill curve, you know, if I drive that, people are right on me all the time. So I don't know how you, you can't be everywhere all the time. So while I appreciate the fact that we should look at all of the speed limits, I'm not sure if at the end of the day, it's going to make a big difference if we can't enforce the limits that we have today.
Well, let me, if I can have a moment to come back. When it got reduced to 35, I worked with Senator Bond. And, and the idea was to get that 35 mile an hour all the way to Emmett School. And the state, they did their study and put it only to, to Asar or where the business district came in. They've, and Senator Bond and his secretary, they go, well, that's the best we could do. And as a village, we should be right in the state and say, you guys can do better. We get, and I still see people walking over to Emmett School from Heron Harbor. You know, to go past the school at 45 miles an hour, in anybody's mind, does that even make sense? That it should start there 35 miles an hour and go, go through two subdivisions. And does it make sense when you're going past Raymond Chevy and the Kia dealer and you got, someone's going to, someone's going to go pass on the right side doing 45 miles an hour and take one of those guys out, guys or gals? I mean, that's 45 miles an hour there. People are traveling. And people are crossing the, the heavy streets. It's got to get slowed down. People are doing 45 miles an hour there. They can understand, even though it's 35.
So.
It's, it's just, we, we should, we should ask, ask for some type of resolution that we send to the state that says this is what we, we're asking. Get it done.
So.
And we already sent the letter down and it got unanswered.
So I would say that I agree with you. It seems like there's a unanimous concern. Trustee Mason, I know trustee Pierce has brought up some questions regarding speed in residential areas. So I'd say that I think we should work with the attorneys and put something together voicing our concerns. Obviously, this one is regarding only related to noise and I guess, noxious fumes, things of that nature. So, but I agree that we can add that to one of our items that we discussed at a meeting coming up where we could look at these limits and, and get some, something in writing to our state representatives.
Understood, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any other discussion regarding this ordinance? And if we want to discuss it and move it to the next regular board meeting?
I think we should put it on the board meeting agenda on the 10th or 11th, whatever date.
Any objection? I see Scott Pierce says yes. Any objection? If no objection, we will move that to the next board meeting for, for a vote. Sorry. Next, we'll item on the regular business is discussion regarding an ordinance amending Section 6-2-8 of the Municipal Code Regarding Fireworks. Chief Gachau.
Sure. So this, this is kind of a comprehensive over revision to our current fireworks ordinance. Currently, the fire district has the primary responsibility for regulation of when they can and can't be discharged when they granted a permit or a license. I'm coordinating with Chief Coke Fair right now to make sure that we're not being redundant in our efforts. So there will probably be a couple of minor changes to the draft ordinance that you have before you in your packet this evening. The reason this came about is for as long as I can remember, going back over 20 years, the village has never had a, a real comprehensive ordinance to manage the resident complaints of people discharging fireworks in the neighborhood. We have had to write the citation under unlawful use of weapon ordinance, which deals with some explosives. And we've always gotten questions from, you know, parents and concerned parties when we write that, that citation to somebody as to why am I getting a ticket for unlawful use of weapons? I was just setting off some fireworks. So really, it's more of a classification issue to have an ordinance that's specific to dealing with the fireworks problem itself, rather than trying to stretch another ordinance to fit. There's going to be some regulation issues in there. Kind of curious just for some input from the board on whether or not they have an interest in having a say on whether or not a permit is granted. And speaking with Chief Coke Fair, there are communities out there where a condition of the district's permit being issued is the municipality issuing a permit in advance. So give the board some, some input at that level as well that they don't currently have. So I'm just kind of curious if the board is interested in having any oversight in that issue, or if they want to leave it to the fire district. And then if they do, what they feel a reasonable permit fee would be for such, such a, a permit to be issued. The fire district currently charges $50.
50?
Yes.
Trustee Pierce?
Um, you know, I'm trying to figure out what we're trying to do here other than find a way to issue permits under the village board purview. I, I have never seen the permitting issues being a problem. The, whenever the high school wants to do their firework, their fireworks display at homecoming and stuff, it's always gets a permit and runs fine. So I think the bigger concern is, is maybe as she said, was having a classification. But I was having a hard time figuring out what the fine is when, if somebody does get charged with unlawful use of a firework or something. It's becoming more and more of an issue. I mean, years ago, I was probably just as guilty, but I couldn't buy the 500 gigawatt bombs that Mr. Conehead fired off to clear out the whole entire stadium like they can now. I mean, they're little firecrackers, they're little smoke bombs or something. Now they're, they're huge bombs and they're totally disruptive to the neighborhoods. So I'd be more concerned with, with how we can enforce that part than the permitting part.
Trustee Pierce, I did ask that same question to the village attorney right before the meeting, and he did look up the fine structure. So I'll let him
Sure.
speak to that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, trustee. And the fine penalty provisions are established in initially 6-2-10 of the Village Code, which references 1-3-1 of the Village Code, which is an antiquated provision, but it goes to $50, then $100, then $250, and then $250. So in that, we can always amend that. If you believe that's too low or too high, you can always amend that amount.
I, I would be in favor of maybe amending it higher because it seems like some people are shooting off 3,000, 4,000, $5,000 worth of fireworks. And if they're shooting off that much money in fireworks, $50 isn't going to faze them. That's my.
Yeah, and I think that I, when he read that, I think we should look at that antiquated number that he said and, and maybe adjust those, those fines. Thank you. Trustee Mason?
You got a term in here, skyrockets. Skyrockets in play after the delay. That does include model rockets because they used to do it, they used to do it at the upper grade.
Oh, the intent behind this ordinance is to enforce strictly fireworks. It just provides definitions, as you could see, of, of what those are. Currently, our current existing definitions are rather broad, and this, this certainly provides a more comprehensive definition of what constitutes a firework.
So if someone bought model rockets and we're, we're shooting them off in the park, that's not a big deal.
Goodbye, I'll say. My perspective, no.
Thank you, trustee Peterson?
I, I agree with trustee Pierce that I'd like to see the fines go up a little bit.
Thank you. Trustee Bluthart?
I do agree with trustee Pierce about the fines. Those seem awfully low. That's not going to prevent anyone from doing any fireworks if they want to or not. Regards to the permit. I'm trying to, I've been thinking since you brought this up about how many groups or people do displays of fireworks. And there's really, I can think of the school, I can think, is there any other ones that I'm missing? I mean, the school in the village, but what other groups or people would we be looking to permit for large displays?
And, and speaking with Chief Coke Fair, traditionally, those are the two events that take place in the village. Historically, though, he says he has been approached at times by parties wishing to host private weddings, private events, that sort of thing, inquire about a fireworks permit. And again, you know, the intent is not to be redundant, but just to seek some direction.
Yeah, I mean, my concern would be is that if we're going to regulate fireworks and displays of fireworks, then just hand off the permit process to the fire department. We need to make sure that their permit process fits what we're regulating, I guess, but they, they intermix and there's no conflicts or anything else. So that would be my concern.
Just to tag on that, in speaking with Chief Coke Fair, a lot of those requirements that were put forth in the draft ordinance by, by the attorneys mirror what the fire district currently follows. They too require a $1 million insurance policy. The only difference between this one is it was a $1 million, our $1 million insurance policy that indemnified the village as well.
Trustee Berman?
I agree with trustee Pierce.
Trustee Dominia?
I agree with trustee Pierce.
All right. Well, I will just add one thing. I am, just for the record, I'm more interested in giving the police some teeth in the fine structure for people that are blowing off fireworks illegally. I am not as interested in issuing additional permits or making additional paperwork for it. So I think if we can amend this to a degree that, you know, they have to show you the fire department's permit, I would maybe prefer a draft of that in that regard.
Well, I'll work with the attorney and we could bring it back for, for the discussion.
Any, anything else from the board?
Well, there's no way anybody's going to get, private party's going to get a billion dollar certificate of insurance. So, I mean, that's moot point. So it's only going to be someone major. Even their business policy is probably not going to get it. So I agree with you. Get the teeth to the, to the police department.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming that the fines come to us if it's within the municipal.
I believe it would be, I'd be, yeah.
Absolutely. I have a post for our adjudication hearings and, you know, the fine structure is part of a larger discussion that's been taking place anyway. We're finding that many of our fine structures are a little bit dated and probably need to be increased. a little bit dated and probably need to be increased to act as more of a deterrent for some other issues. And generally, they're low, but they just have never been raised.
So we have to wait to revise the other ordinance.
Well, I think we I think
In this ordinance, we have to.
We could probably amend this to put a fine structure in this specifically without the cross referencing would be my opinion. So I guess we can bring this if it's if the board, I get time is, I guess, not of the essence since 4th of July is passed, but the we could bring it to the board at the next meeting. And if there are additional revisions, just not waive the second reading for any other tweaks, if that's how we want to handle it. Do we have approval to move it to the next board meeting? Any objection? I will put it on the August agenda. Last item on the cow is discussion regarding an ordinance amending section nine dash one dash two of the municipal code of Antioch regarding amendments to adopted codes. This one, I believe the attorney
Yes.
will discuss. We had a little discussion about this prior.
So we're going to be asking to table this just for a procedural matter rather than the other one. We will provide in two weeks in the next board meeting, a memorandum of the changes being made and more closely redline those provisions. This section nine dash one dash two amendment deals with those building code modifications where we personalize them or specialize them for the village of Antioch. So with the chair's consent, I would be asking everyone for a motion to table this. I know it's a cow meeting, but if we just table it for two weeks or just bring it back in two weeks, we'll have a memorandum outlining the changes. And we'll redline it consistent with the other legislation that we do. The reason this was done a little bit differently is because it's very nature of it being a modification of those building code regulations that I was talking about.
Any objection to tabling this to next cow meeting? All right, no, no objection. I'd ask if there's any other business that the board would like to discuss. Otherwise, I entertain a motion to adjourn the cow meeting. We'll move.
Second.
Motion by trustee Blueheart, second by trustee Peterson. Roll, please.
Pierce.
I.
Peterson.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Six, yes, zero, no, motion carries. All right, we'll now move to the regular board meeting. Call to order at 7:03 PM. Roll, please.
I am present.
Trustee Masek.
Here.
Trustee Peterson.
Here.
You're.
Trustee Berman. Here.
Trustee Domeniac.
Here.
Here. Any objection to trustee Pierce attending remotely? All right, we'll move on to the mayor report. The first item on the agenda is the appointment of Mark Searle as an alternate to the park board for the term ending 2023. An appointment of Jenny D. Benedetto as an alternate to the park board with the term ending in 2025. Yeah, I need a motion. I need a motion. It's like.
I'll make the motion.
Oh.
Well, we have trustee, we have trustee Pierce with the motion and a second by trustee Berman. Discussion. Trustee Pierce.
No discussion.
Trustee Masek. Trustee Peterson.
No discussion.
Trustee Blueheart.
No discussion.
Trustee Berman.
No discussion.
Trustee Domeniac.
For the people that are on Zoom, and I don't know if we're going to be able to find out who's on Zoom. I asked at last meeting, maybe we should explain what an alternate is on the
Sure, there there was, forgive me, because they're all different numbers. There are five regular board members. Seven, correct? Seven on this commission and then two alternates. The ordinance reads that there shall be two alternates, and those positions had been vacant. So we are filling those terms. There are no, we have to work with the staff to adjust. I think the staggering of the terms was was off. There's a bunch of park board members expiring next year. And so we're going to work through making sure those are back on track. But this is for the alternate position. They they participate only if and when a regular board member is not present at the meeting.
Just being clarified, the the motion and second is for the appointment of both.
That is correct. My motion.
Please take roll.
Pierce.
I.
Mason.
I'm going to abstain just because I had notification on Facebook with the gentleman, so I'm going to just abstain from this one.
Peterson.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Berman.
Yes.
Domeniac.
Yes.
Five, yes, zero, no, one abstain. Motion carries. Will you please come up so you can be sworn in by the clerk? Thank you. All right, so acknowledgements. We have two brief acknowledgements. One, we'd like to acknowledge, as many of you have seen, there's been some repair work or safety measures taken to secure the culvert on the Pittman property is getting pretty close to the sidewalk. In Lake County Grading graciously donated equipment to the village, so we did not have to spend money on renting that equipment. So I'd like to thank them. And then also, as we've seen in the news, and I wanted to find out a little bit more about this today. The Olympics is on, and I've seen some, I guess, postings regarding a local Olympian. So we're going to recognize Felicia Stansel, who is originally from Antioch. She is in the Olympics in the BMX racing. She began cycling when she was four years old and graduated from Marion University, and she is on the USA Cycling Team. So it's nice to have a local participant in the Olympics, and we wish her well. I'm not sure when the races, but if anybody knows, they could chime in.
I thought there was a watch party at any stages.
Okay, maybe maybe it's tonight. So we wish we wish her well on the other side of the world. So the next item is citizens wishing to address the board. I don't know if anybody else signed in or if anybody on Zoom wishes to address the board. Should we read the instructions again? Yeah, when I read the instructions one more time.
You're joining from a telephone. You can press star nine to raise your hand on an Android or iOS device. Have more than raise hand and on a computer, click raise hand in the Zoom controls.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. There's three items. Do any of the trustees wish to remove any of these items from the consent agenda? Right? If not, I will entertain a motion in a second.
I'll move. Second.
Motion by trustee Domeniac, second by trustee Berman. Any discussion regarding the consent agenda items? If not, I ask for a roll call.
Pierce.
I.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Berman.
Yes. Yeah.
Six voting yes, zero, no, consent agenda motion carries. Regular business. First item is consideration and approval of payments of accounts payable as prepared by staff. I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Who to approve payment accounts payable in the amount of $358,197.52. Second.
Motion by trustee Domeniac, second by trustee Peterson. Discussion. Trustee Pierce.
No discussion, Your Honor.
Trustee Masek. Trustee Peterson.
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Blueheart.
No question.
Trustee Berman.
No questions.
Trustee Domeniac.
No question.
Right. Roll, please.
Pierce.
I.
Mason.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Berman.
Yes.
Domeniac.
Yeah.
Six, yes, zero, no, motion carries. Next item is consideration and approval of a resolution concerning a hearing required to be held pursuant to the bond issued notification of the state of Illinois prior to the sale of general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source series 2021 of the village of Antioch. Resolution number 21 dash 53. I'll need a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Domeniac. Discussion. Trustee Pierce.
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Masek. Trustee Peterson.
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Blueheart.
No question.
Trustee Berman.
No questions.
Trustee Domeniac.
No question.
I'll entertain a roll call, please.
Pierce.
I.
Mason. Peterson.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Berman.
Yes.
Domeniac.
Yeah.
Six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing the village administrator to execute an agreement with the Dagan Group for environmental engineering services. Oh, I skipped one. I did skip one. Sorry about that. We'll move back. We're going to go back to number five. Consideration and approval of a resolution concerning a hearing required. No, skipping this again. There we go. Crossed the wrong one. Consideration approval of an ordinance amending title four of the municipal code of Antioch regarding mobile food services. There, I finally got to it. All right. Take a motion in a second.
I'll move. Second.
All right, and this is, we are not waving the second. Except.
Excepting for three.
So I have a motion by trustee Domeniac, a second by trustee Berman. Discussion, trustee Pierce.
Yes, Your Honor. I had certain residents approach me and very concerned that we're going to make it too onerous for the food trucks to come into Antioch with this regulation and prevent them from using the food trucks for the fundraising. That's very critical to them. And so I I thought the board should be aware of that concern and also listen to what other people's feelings are about the the food trucks. I'm not sure at this time if we can't tweak this a little bit more.
Trustee Masek.
I think fundraisers are fine for food trucks. I would just like this to be a little more restrictive where the food trucks can actually park to protect our businesses that pay proper taxes, that pay our sales tax, that go to our place. I'd just like to see more protection for the people that that have brick and mortar.
Trustee Peterson.
I have some issues with this. I think it's too restrictive. And I'd really like to talk about certain things 200 feet from any brick and mortar restaurant. There's a gentleman in the audience tonight, L Anderson, who owns Limerick. Is a bar and restaurant you can eat there. And he personally told me that he has no issue with it whatsoever if Toff was closed and we brought in three, five, six food trucks. It's foot traffic. The people downtown want foot traffic, and these are a new thing, and they're very exciting. Well, not very new, but they've become very popular. And people come to Antioch for events and food trucks are drawing people in, and that's what we need is foot traffic downtown, and they will bring people in. So there's a couple other things here. Fourth of July event had, I believe, three to four food trucks. But there was a 45 minute wait in line to order food, and you waited an hour and a half to actually get your food. So we need more. In the ordinance, it says no more than three food trucks at an event, and that that should not, we shouldn't limit how many can be there. There's another limit. I believe it's 500 feet from a property line of an elementary school, middle school, or secondary school. We can't tell the schools that they can't have a food truck. They use them for fundraising. And not only that, if we did do that, we wouldn't be able to put a food truck on Pittman property when it's all done, when it's when it's named a new park. We wouldn't even be able to put them up at the pavilion because 500 feet would reach all the way to that little baseball diamond, which the the District 34 owns. So we wouldn't be able to even have food trucks up at the pavilion of Williams Park. So we really need to look at this ordinance and tweak it for Antioch and not restrict residents here. And and I'm all for protecting all the businesses and restaurants, but I don't believe the restaurants are going to be upset about this. I I think that it's going to bring people to Antioch, and they're going to see their restaurants and go in. That's that's what I have to say. I I'd really like to see this brought back for the second reading with with several changes. And I'd be willing to email the attorney with the changes I I'd like to see.
Trustee Blueheart.
I have similar concerns of trustee Pierce and trustee Peterson. I think I brought up at the last meeting about, you know, fundraiser events and these trucks coming in for a one day event and having to go through the process of applying for a permit and so forth. But I have a concern with that, and and obviously, we want to make sure we're doing all the health and safety restrictions, but I don't know if permits are the way to go or just having very strict health and safety requirements that can be ticketed or fined if they're not following those. But I think we need to either account for these fundraiser type events in this, or maybe call them out. They have some type of easier process for them to apply for the permit or obtain the permit. And obviously, the I I foot traffic, like trustee Peterson mentioned, is is a plus. And the fundraising that groups are getting from these is is huge. Everyone's using them now. I think we need to take the time to do this properly so we don't rush it and put some of our fundraisers out of business more or less.
Trustee Berman.
I agree. I think we do need to wait and tweak it a bit more. As far as the restrictions, you know, I I do understand trustee Masek's concern the brick and mortar businesses that are already in town. And I appreciate that Mr. Anderson came and and let us know his thoughts on that. So I I not sure how exactly we would go about it, but I I think that maybe we need to get input from the other businesses in the downtown area to see what what they feel about it so that we can make a better decision in regards to that. So I I think that the food trucks do bring in a lot more foot traffic. It people love them. So I think we need to time in making our decisions.
Trustee Domeniac.
My first question is to trustee Pierce, when you stated that you were getting input from residents about this being onerous, could you just give us a little bit more information about what their concerns were so that we could address them in this ordinance?
Their their concerns are, number one, the cost, and they they felt that the $50 was was probably okay. But by the time you're done doing, if you're done doing the police background check, the licensing, the permitting, the the timeframe it takes to get a permit, the the fact that some of these places are permitted in other communities, and they're coming here, and they may be here just for one time in the year, and they've got to go through all this. They may say, we don't want to come here. And all these, all these food trucks to operate legally have to have a a Lake County health permit to operate legally. So I I can see having some sort of permit process, but we've got to make sure it's smooth and 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 doesn't prevent the those businesses coming from here. And I I tend to agree with trustee Peterson that the I don't think they're going to have that big of an impact on a business. Number, because I think it's more important to get the foot traffic in here and people moving around downtown and and in our wherever else they're going to set up for their fundraisers, because that draws people in, and as people come in, they'll look and see what else we've got. And we've got some amazing things that will override tho- those concerns of the food trucks being too close. So.
Thank you.
So we got, so what?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
My question to him, I had some other.
Yeah, go. Yeah, sure.
But if you have something you want.
No, I just what I what I what I I'll come back to trustee Domeniac. What I hear, and I think would I guess confused me or just didn't seem right when I read the ordinance was, we're actually talking, we really almost need a two part ordinance or two ordinances. One, for food trucks that want to be registered and licensed and based in Antioch, that that's their permanent location and have a location and have a yearly license so that they can be based in Antioch, that they're out of Antioch, Illinois. But then on the other side, if somebody's just coming in for a day, we need something in here, the separate ordinance that allows us to regulate where they are located, make sure that they're licensed with the county and the health department versus all kind of mixed together. Cause I'd hate to see somebody have to come in for a day permit, go through all these background checks, cause you know, sometimes these things come together two, three days in advance. So I think it's almost a two, we're talking about two different things. A truck that's located here versus trucks that come in for a special event for one day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just to react to that, this is an annual permit, but the universe of food trucks is not that big. And so, I mean, the pizza food truck has been to probably five or six fundraisers. So I guess from my perspective, just responding to what you're saying, if we have an annual permit fee of $50 and they go through this, that means to me that once they're approved to be in Antioch, they go to New Haven in March and they go to Heron Harbor in April. They shouldn't have to go through the whole process all over again, but generally speaking, that would be a one-off. They wouldn't be here permanently. I'm not sure I'm understanding what you mean by a food truck that's based in Antioch because food trucks go all over. So I'm not saying I don't agree with you. I think I don't understand.
Yeah, I'm saying so if, say, Anastasia's wanted to have a food truck, they would have to come and pay it, you know, well, I guess they already have a restaurant license, but if they were, you know, said, hey, you know, my address is something here in Drive in Antioch, they would have to have it registered here was, was what I was thinking.
I brought that up at the last meeting. I can't remember what the minute said. But I did bring that up as to how we would approach the existing brick and mortar. So you're right, we need to address that. I don't know if it's a separate ordinance or not, but first of all, thank you, Mr. Anderson, for coming. I'm assuming you're here to show support for this or you have a, okay. I also did speak to Angela Burns at Little Bean Coffee Shop and asked her what her thoughts were about this. And one of the concerns I had about the restriction on where they're located and the feet, the distance, is because it would affect potentially from, from Toff, it would affect the Limerick, it could affect Taylor's on top and it could affect Little Bean, possibly Mexican Paradise. And her response was she thought it was really exciting that we're doing this, that we're trying to bring in more of them. She didn't feel like she was gonna have any issues with a food truck coming in that would potentially compete with her. I think our business owners believe that they can stand up to any food truck and also felt that if there's a food truck over on top that's serving something that she doesn't have, but she's got ice cream or coffee drinks or whatever, that they would come. So she was very supportive, but unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. I also spoke to Helen over at the Vegas and she basically said she didn't have an opinion one way or the other. She didn't see any reason why not to do it. She didn't see really any reason why to do it, but she was neutral on it. I do know that the business owners that are retail are very excited about the idea of being, of having food trucks particularly on Main Street because more so than Toff, if they're on Main Street, that means they start seeing all the shops that we have. So I would not be supportive of putting restrictions. These are not gonna be there every day of the year, right? And I think that if we have food trucks, people come in, they see our other shops, they see our other restaurants with the marketing tool for us. So I would concur that we should not put those restrictions in around the brick and mortar. And I also agree on the, the school limits and the number of vehicles, I think, that trustee Peterson brought up. So I think if we can make some of these tweaks.
Okay, so I will go around again to the trustees and see if there's other comments. I do see a Zoom hand up. I know it's, as long as it's on topic relating to the food truck ordinance, I will allow public comment or question.
Your Honor, while we're waiting for comments, since you're gonna go back around, I would make a sub-motion that we table this until the second meeting in August to give us time to hash out some of these issues and come back with a an ordinance or a resolution that is actually ripe. I don't think the time is ripe on what we have in front of us. So I'm making a sub-motion to table.
I'll second that.
Alright, I have a motion in a second.
Hello? I'm sorry.
We have Dwayne. Okay, so we have, we have a motion in a second. I'm gonna pause discussion. I'm gonna take Dwayne and we're gonna come back.
I'm sorry, I had a mute problem. Anyways, and just to comment about the whole licensing, most food trucks will operate with multiple licenses for multiple municipalities because each one is regulated, you know, in that way that you will need a license to operate there. So they will have yearly operating licenses in different municipalities. So having the different structure of a day pass versus a year pass, you know, is definitely a good option. For those, my question is for those food trucks that might have a year pass, will you structure a certain area that they will be able to park? Because that is something that they could do on a daily or every weekend-type basis where they will operate and find a certain area to park and just operate there. So, you know, take that into consideration. Someone owning a food truck is essentially like owning another restaurant that is just on wheels.
Good. I mean, that's something that we can, you know, take into consideration as we work through this. It appears, obviously, there's a motion in the second. I'd ask for discussion regarding tabling this until we it's a non-debatable motion. So I'll take a, I'll take a roll that we kick this over while we fine-tune this ordinance and get it right the first time around. So.
And that's to the second meeting in August.
Yes.
My fourth or 25th, whatever.
Yeah. Well, we're gonna, yeah, table this. So Madam Clerk, please take a roll.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Dominiac?
Yes.
Six voting yes, zero voting no. Motion to table the item to second meeting in August carries. Moving on, we have, which I already read once, but I'll read it again. Number seven, consideration approval of a resolution authorizing the village administrator to execute an agreement with Deegan Group for Environmental Engineering Services, Resolution Number 21-54.
So moved.
Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Bluthard. Administrator Kime will give us the update on this proposal.
Thank you, Your Honor. We issued a request for qualifications for environmental services related to the property that we now own on Main and Depot. And we had three respondents to that. We interviewed you all three. But staff felt that the Deegan Group had the best proposal, had more relevant experience with these types of projects and was also a low-cost estimate. Gary Deegan, the owner, is here tonight with us. I thought, I thought you should meet him. So we can, you know, begin to explore the next phase of this property and remedying any, any potential environmental issues that may be there, either ahead of time before construction were to begin or come up with a good plan on how they would be remediated potentially during the construction. The idea is here is to eliminate as many surprises as possible and to not let construction be slowed down by environmental issues. We wanna be prepared as we can be when that property gets developed. Gary, would you like to come up and say hello and? Yeah, please. Just give them a little, a little bit about the company.
Appreciate it. Hi, everybody. Mayor and trustees, we're very pleased to be selected for your team. You guys are gonna do some exciting things across the street. As a member of that team, we're gonna support your planners and your engineers and your construction and public works folks to make sure that we can simplify and have them understand the environmental conditions so that as you create the best and highest use and the fun things that you wanna do across the street over there, you don't have the environmental conditions that might cause a safety concern or water quality concern or delay the project by any means. We're very good at what we do in that, in that role. We've done this for a number of municipalities when they wanna create their town centers from former industrial properties or formal commercial properties. So like I say, we're pleased to be here. We've been in business for 23 years. We work all over Lake County and other counties, but our focus is in Lake County because I'm a Libertyville resident and our office is in Lake Bluff, so we're right down the street from the folks. And we're up, up this way all the time. Thank you again for selecting us. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Any, any questions from the trustees for, for the administrator or Mr. Deegan? Trustee Pierce?
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Mason?
No questions.
Trustee Peterson?
No, I, I read the board packet all about this company and it's impressed and I'm really looking forward to working with you and seeing what we're gonna come up with.
Trustee Bluthard?
No question.
Trustee Berman?
No questions.
Trustee Dominiac?
I'm just really excited about the pace and the forward motion, so I'm glad you're gonna be joining us. Thank you.
Thank you. After, let's take a roll call on the approval of the, of the resolution.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Dominiac?
Yes.
Six voting yes, zero voting no. Very happy that the resolution will carry. Next item on the agenda is the consideration approval of ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter III of the Municipal Code of Antioch, establishing vehicle weight limits on several streets. This is ordinance number 21-7-24. I will turn this over to the attorney. We had some discussion regarding this prior to the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen on the board. We are still researching this matter, both in law and fact. We'd ask with the chair's approval for a motion to table it to, on the first meeting, first meeting in August of this year.
We haven't understanding of why you want it tabled?
Go ahead. There was some discussion and Administrator Kime can tell you regarding the, may have not been the right weight limit based on other standards and there may be other laws to look into. Well, let him explain further.
Thank you, Your Honor. Based on your comment at the last meeting, we started taking a broader view of this ordinance and what it's designed to do and just kinda looking at all aspects of it. And it raised several questions. The police chief had raised some questions about enforceability. Brought up a point about, maybe this weight limit is too high. You know, I started looking at different aspects of, what are the weight limits in Wisconsin on the connector roads and on the roads coming in? And then does this really make sense as we look at it? And unfortunately, more I looked into it, more questions emerged. And I actually talked to a resident who's a weight, a truck weight official with the state who brought up a whole nother set of laws relating to trucking and what they're allowed to do and how they're plated. And I, I think we need to just pause on this and make sure it's done right, done properly, that quickly. We're currently not experiencing a lot of trucks, gravel trucks at this moment. So we want some more time to make sure we're getting this one right and having the right limit and do it the right way so it's the most enforceable for the police department.
And I make a motion to table. I asked you to look into this and so I wanna make sure it's done correctly. So I'll make that motion to table it.
Second.
Alright, motion but from trustee Dominiac, second by trustee Peterson. Roll, please.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Dominiac?
Yes.
Six voting yes, zero voting no. Motion to table carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of an ordinance amending Section 1-4-6 of the Municipal Code of Antioch regarding remote attendance at Board of Trustees meetings. Ordinance 21-7-25.
So moved. Second.
Motion by trustee Peterson, second by trustee Dominiac. Discussion, trustee Pierce.
Well, obviously, since this probably impacts me the most, I think I'm gonna abstain on any discussion or voting on this.
Trustee Mason?
I think it's important to be here. I think it's I get, I get people gotta work. It's important to be here. My comment to this.
Thank you. Trustee Peterson?
I've stated before that if we, if we limit the amount of people that can run for this board, it's wrong. There are a lot of people who travel for a living and they have the right to pay their mortgages, support their children, support their families. And if we say you have to be here, you can't, you can't attend remotely. That cuts a lot of people out of the herd that can actually run for this board. And I don't, I think everybody in Antioch has a right to run for this board. And if you're, if the reason you're not is because you wanna support your family, well, that's, it's wrong of us. So with this past year with COVID, we realized that the world still turned and business still happened. And so many people worked from home and they were successful. And I think that we, if we learn nothing else but that, we learn that. And I think that one of us, if we have a problem and we can't get here, we have the technology to attend this meeting remotely and I, I'm all in favor of it, 100%.
Thank you, trustee Bluthard.
No comment.
Trustee Berman?
No comments.
Trustee Dominiac?
I am fine with this. Just to clarify, all we're doing here is saying that we don't have to vote every time. It's just if there's an objection by two people and that the, this financial reimbursement is being taken.
Yes, and there, and there still has to be a physical quorum.
Right, exactly.
Yep.
So, you know, this, this ordinance was passed under the previous administration as a result of not COVID, but the state of Illinois having a statute that said this was allowed. So it's not unique to Antioch. I think everybody on this board would like to be here as much as they can, but they can't always. And I feel that anyone who participates via Zoom is just as effective. And we actually, if you wanna flip it, and I brought this up last meeting, are not really aware of who else is attending our meeting because they're on Zoom. So if we could continue to try and explore how we can know who those participants are, but to me, that's the reverse of this. So I'm fine with this and support it and, and think we should just go ahead and pass it.
I just got one question.
Sure.
So other, other communities, I get under COVID rules, once COVID rules goes away, state legislators don't, don't adopt this to be a state legislator. You can't, you can't be a state legislator and be in Zoom and just call, call in the meetings at Springfield. Yes or no?
The answer is no. I don't, respectfully, I don't understand the relevance of it though.
Well.
There's a different body. They're an elected statewide.
They're like, they're like. That's my, that's my point. But other communities, do they adapt the same, same, same statute where?
This ordinance?
This, this type of.
Yes, I have different communities that do different things with regards to electronic participation. More are, respectfully, more are leaning towards a more open meeting, especially after the world didn't stop when the, when it shut down during COVID. And we now live in a world where Zooms and meetings and Teams and whatnot are all on there. So yes, the evolution of the law is for a more expansive permission to allow people to attend virtually. But to your point, the state legislature doesn't, but a completely different creature, one of constitutional origin. We are a creature of the municipal code.
I understand that part. So we still have to have in-person form?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Now, again, can I say one thing? Of course. I really, I am not, the one caveat I wanna say is, I don't know what the evolution of the law is relative to future pandemics or whatnot. I will not speculate on that. I am not here to propagate or to speculate. So yes, the answer is it still needs to be in a quorum. Might the law change? Because who knows what happens next year? I don't know. I am not a prognosticator. I'm a lawyer. I'm telling you about the statement of law and the evolution of law as I see it.
Trustee Dominiac?
Yeah, and I think just to clarify for the people that are in the room and the people that we can't see because we don't know who they are, cause they're on Zoom. This is not, I'm gonna stay home tonight and put my feet up and, and watch TV while I'm on mute. This is specific about personal illness or disability, employment purposes, business of the public body, or a family or other emergency. So those are all legitimate reasons for not being here.
Okay, so I have one housekeeping matter. I don't believe that the motion waived the second reading. So I think we need an amended motion.
I'll amend the motion.
Way of the second reading.
Way of the second reading. I'll second that.
I have, I have a motion again by trustee Peterson. I have a motion again by trustee Peterson, waiving the second reading, a second by trustee Dominique. We've gone through discussion. So I'd ask Madam Clerk to take a role, please.
Pierce? Sorry, did you say insane?
Yes, I did.
Maisick?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Dominique?
Yes.
Five voting yes, zero voting no, one abstains. Motion carries. Last item on the regular business agenda is consideration and approval of an ordinance authorizing the village administrator to sell Savage or otherwise dispose of equipment, ordinance number twenty one dash seven dash twenty six.
Like motion waiving the second reading.
Second.
Motion by trustee Bluthart, second by trustee Dominique. Any discussion regarding this or questions for administrator Kim? Trustee Pierce?
Trying to mute. Sorry, no questions.
Trustee Maisick?
No.
Trustee Peterson?
No questions, Sharon.
Trustee Bluthart?
No question.
Trustee Berman?
No questions.
Trustee Dominique?
No question.
Roll, please.
Pierce?
Hi.
Maisick?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Manya?
Yes.
Six voting yes, zero no, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the administrator's report.
Thank you, your honor and board. You may have noticed some work going on across the street. The mayor referenced it. And again, thank you to Lake County Grading for letting us use that machine. The work was successful, not easy. He didn't make it any easier. But the crew did a very good job of keeping that site safe and reinforcing the collapse that had basically reached the sidewalk. It was too close to the roadway. It was really making me nervous. So thank you for allowing us to go in there and fix it. Right now, we're we're at a cost somewhere in the eight to ten thousand dollar range. Had we hired a contractor, it'd be four times that at least. So kudos to Public Works and Dennis Heimbroeck. He's the one that operated the machine and installed those pipes.
He was having fun.
I think he was.
Yeah.
Nonetheless, I I feel a lot better about pushing that pipe farther away from Main Street. It's in a more stable condition now and safer. So just wanted to report on that. And I believe we've gone into executive session tonight.
Yes.
Under property acquisition.
Property acquisition.
Legal updates.
Legal updates, correct. Thank you. Village clerk, any report? Trustees, any report? All right, then if not. Oh.
I'd like, this is trustee Pierce, I'd like to take one moment. All the trustees received a copy of a report from the chief of police. But I just want to take a moment to thank our police officers for all their hard work and all our safety people that are doing hard work out there. As as evidenced by everything that's going on lately and and not only in Antioch, but around the world, there there's an element of the public that has been emboldened to try to do and get away with whatever they can get away with. Whether it's a public taking of somebody's vehicle or nighttime crawling through people's vehicles or just doing whatever they want to do because they think it's their right to do that. Our police officers are sitting there working hard to do that. And I want to thank them. In addition, I want to take this moment to remind people, please, please, keep your cars locked, keep your houses locked. I know this is Antioch and I shouldn't be saying that, but this is a new world in which we're living. And I want to ask everybody, please tell their friends lock it, click it and shut it. Don't make it easy. Thank you.
Trustee Maisick?
My fault. I typed it up and I forgot to send it. So I'll get the other work.
Thank you. Just see Peterson?
I don't have any.
Trustee Bluthart?
No report.
Trustee Berman?
No report.
Trustee Dominique?
No report.
All right, thank you. If no reports, I'd entertain a motion to move into executive session just to discuss property acquisition in litigation with no further business to take place when we come back to the regular meeting. A motion by trustee Dominique, second by trustee Peterson. Roll, please.
Pierce? Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Yeah, six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries.